All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January 2022 work session of the Board of Education of Charles County. I will begin by reading our mission statement. The mission of Charles County Public Schools is to provide an opportunity for all school-aged children to receive an academically challenging, quality education that builds character, equips for leadership, and prepares for life in an environment that is safe and conducive to learning. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. So we will begin today with resolutions, and the first will be Black History Month, which I shall be reading. And who do we have receiving? Okay.
I'm gonna read her.
Okay, sure. Yeah, welcome up.
In the middle.
Yes, right in the middle. Everyone, there you go. Let your public admire you.
Accepting the resolution is student Michelle Johnson Reeves. St. Charles High School senior Michelle Johnson Reeves is a youth apprentice who splits her time between CTE and communication, working about 20 hours a week while attending classes. She is interested in studying law after her undergraduate studies and plans to own and operate her own business. With an interest in making films and storytelling, Johnson Reeves is eyeing a career working with leaders of different industries, carrying knowledge of intellectual property through all the realms of her future career ventures as a published author and business professional.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Yeah, I'm gonna read it. Resolution, Board of Education of Charles County, Black History Month, February 1st, 2024. Whereas February has been designated as Black History Month in the United States, and the theme for the year 2024 is African-Americans and the Arts. Whereas diversity of our nation, state, and county reaffirms the need to be aware of and respect the rights of all people and their contributions to our country, and to encourage good relations not only with schools but also with the community. And whereas the Board of Education approved the 10 requirements to increase minority achievement and eliminate the opportunity and achievement gaps as part of the strategic plan. And whereas members of the Equity and Diversity Committee meet bi-monthly to monitor the implementation and progress of the 10 requirements. And whereas equity training continues as a requirement for all schools, for all system employees, now therefore be it resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education of Charles County join the nation, state, and county in giving recognition to Black history by requesting all public schools to infuse instructional learning activities in all subjects throughout the school year, which incorporate Black contributions, and to provide appropriate ways of observance for Black History Month. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made part of the record of the January 9th, 2024 board meeting. By the order of the Board of Education of Charles County, this, oh, should be changed, this 22nd day of January, 2024, Maria Navarro, EDD Superintendent, Yanell Morley Esquire, Chairperson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kevin Reisinger, CTE Instructional Specialist for Charles County. As many know, Career and Technical Education allows Charles County students to explore different career fields while in high school. Students in the CTE pathways are able to earn industry-recognized certifications and/or college credits. There are several ways students can access to CTE pathways here in Charles County. They're able to apply the regionalized programs in 8th grade and then in 10th grade. Additionally, students can enter into CTE pathways at their zoned high schools through the course-selection process, which is currently happening now. We'd like to highlight some of these pathways today as we do the resolution for CTE Month. And representing the Computer Science Pathway, we have Ms. Robin Henry from McDonough High School. Yep.
The Business Management Pathway is represented by Mr. Daniel Richards from Westlake High School. Our Teacher Academy of Maryland Pathway is represented by Ms. Sean Starcher from La Plata High School. And finally, the Junior ROTC Pathway is represented by Lieutenant Colonel Jonathan Brown from North Point High School.
Resolution, Board of Education of Charles County, Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas the legislature of the state of Maryland has recognized that the progress and well-being of the citizens of Maryland depends to a great extent on education and training for the world of work. And whereas the career and technical educators and career and technical students of this state hold as their primary aim the development of skills, leadership, and efficiency consistent with the American work ethic. And whereas the National Technical Honor Society, Future Farmers of America, Educators Rising, and Skills USA have joined efforts to give an added definition to career and technical education. And whereas, February 1st through 29th, 2024, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Charles County does hereby support February 1st through 29th, 2024 as Career and Technical Education Month in Charles County, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made part of the record of the January 22nd board meeting, correct?
Yes.
By order of the Board of Education of Charles County, Maria Navarro, EDD Superintendent of Schools, and Yanell Morley Esquire, Chairperson.
Good afternoon, Board of Education. Board of Education Chairperson, Ms. Morley; Vice Chairperson, Ms. Kriemer; Board members, Dr. Navarro, and our distinguished guests. I'm Kristin Moats, Content Specialist for Gifted and Differentiated Services for Charles County Public Schools. The Office of Gifted Education is committed to providing rigorous instructional programs that nurture potential and enhance student academic success. Additionally, the Office of Gifted Education sponsors a variety of academic competitions and enrichment opportunities throughout the year. Accepting the resolution proclaiming February as Gifted and Talented Education Month is Eliana Palera, a gifted and grade-accelerated student at Berry Elementary School.
Resolution, Board of Education of Charles County, Gifted and Talented Education Month, January 22nd, 2024. Whereas Maryland now aims to reach world-class educational standards and produce a globally competitive workforce, and whereas gifted and talented students are defined by law as students who have outstanding talent and perform, or show the potential for performing at remarkably high levels of accomplishment when compared with their peers, and whereas Maryland recognizes that gifted and talented students are found in youth from all cultural groups and economic strata, and whereas the Annotated Code of Maryland specifies that gifted and talented students require different programs and services beyond what is provided in the regular school program in order to reach their full potential. And whereas the Code of Maryland Regulations 13A.04.07 specifies standards for gifted and talented education, student identification, programs and services, professional development and reporting, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Charles County endorses the recognition of February 1st through the 29th of 2024 as Gifted and Talented Education Month, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made a part of the record for the January 22nd, 2024 board meeting. Signed by Dr. Navarro, Superintendent of Schools, and Ms. Mor, excuse me, Yanell Morley, Chairperson.
And finally, we will have National School Counseling Week. I think someone is coming up to accept, okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It is an honor for me to introduce our school counselor representatives today. My name is Jacqueline Chavez, and I'm the Supervising School Counselor for Charles County Public Schools. All around Charles County Public Schools, there are dynamic school counselors making a tremendous impact in the lives of our students and families. Many of them do so with very little pomp and circumstance, as is the case with my two colleagues here today. They are school counselors because they simply love what they do. They come to work each day to establish and implement counseling programs in their buildings that make a difference. Not only do students benefit from their services, but they are also important members of their building staff who collaborate with administrators and teachers to ensure their student's success. Accepting this resolution and representing all the amazing counselors around this county, we have Ms. Elizabeth Hurlinger from Mitchell Elementary and Ms. Cassandra Vaughn from Jennifer Elementary.
Resolution, Board of Education of Charles County, National Schools Counseling Week, February 5th through the 9th, 2024. Whereas school counselors are employed in public schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors support parents in furthering the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Charles County herewith extends an appreciation to all school counselors for their commitment and dedication to students, and does hereby proclaim January 5th through the 9th, 2024, as National Schools Counseling Week in Charles County, and it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be inserted in the minutes of January 2022, 2004 meeting. By the order of Charles County Board of Education, Charles County, the 9th of January, oop, the 22nd of January, 2024, signed by Dr. Navarro and Ms. Yanell Morley, Chairperson.
All right, next up are our recognitions, and we will start with Maryland School Board Recognition Month. That's you, you're on.
Very seldom do you ever get recognized, and this is the month to do so, so I just want to read a proclamation from our governor from the state of Maryland. Maryland School Board Recognition Month, January 2024. Whereas the Maryland Association of Boards of Education is a private nonprofit organization dedicated to serving and supporting boards of education in Maryland, and whereas Maryland students greatly benefit from state school boards providing access to essential academic, social, emotional, and economic supports, and whereas our state is grateful to all Maryland school boards that work to ensure a rigorous and world-class education experience for every Maryland student. Now therefore, I, Wes Moore, Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Maryland School Board Recognition Month in Maryland, and call upon all people of our state to join in this observance. I just wanted to make a note that we have in front of you our board members, and also we have a former board member in our audience, Ms. Vicky Kelly, too. Wave, there you go, thank you. Individuals who become board members do so not because it's a high-paying job, and not because it's an easy job. They do it because they care about their communities, they care about public education, and they care about the youth, and want to make sure that we are always thinking about how to invest in young people for the future of our community. So I want to, as a citizen of the county, I just want to recognize the Board of Education. You all don't know what you get yourselves into. When you run and you do a lot of work that is behind the scenes, it is very much appreciated, and I very much appreciate the amount of care that you have as you make decisions for the students in our county. So thank you so much. And we also have a certificate from the Maryland School Board Leadership also highlighting the importance of this month. So if we could, please have you come up and take a picture with two of them, please.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, and now for my personal favorite part of the afternoon slash evening, we are going to recognize our Student State winners. All right. Everybody? Yeah. Yeah. Can we all come up? This is where we shake hands.
Yeah. So first, congratulations to the board members for your recognition, and that is much deserved. I would like to, well, first of all, my name is Tim Bodemer. I'm the Content Specialist for Fine and Performing Arts, and I am proud to introduce today the Principal of La Plata High School, Doug Dolan, and the Band Director, Wes Harler, who are going to do all of the name-calling for the La Plata Marching Band, who on October 22nd won first place at the US Bands, Maryland, Virginia, Delaware State Marching Band Class 2A Championships. In that, there are multiple categories, individual categories, that's the overall. They won Best Music, Visual Effect, and General Effect, which is to be congratulated as well. So at this point, I'd like to have Mr. Harler come up and introduce the members of the band, and Mr. Dolan as well, to help with the certificates.
I'm Wes Harler, I am the Band Director at La Plata, and I'm just gonna speak for like two seconds. We've got some really special students that we're gonna call up here right now, and this is my second year teaching there, and I just could not be more proud of all the progress they've made. There's some really awesome stuff cooking across the street in this music program. And but I know a few of you made it out to the preview show that we did before that, that was really cool to see some of y'all over there, and we look forward to seeing you do all the other awesome stuff that we're doing. So again, thank you for having us today. Awesome. Okay, here we go. Lauren Grace Compton. Jacob Goldsmith. William Rocco Way. And Ronald Stringer. So that is all the students that participated with the group, and now we have several of our staff members that helped me out throughout the course of the season, which I would not be able to do anything without them, so it is really great they made it today. Tiffany, my wife, Tiffany Harler. And Ashton Gordon.
you know, moving up from the two-hour delay. So it's not a situation where it's just a small group of people that are making decisions. And we also consult with the neighboring counties. We see what St. Mary's and Kelver do. And based upon the direction of the storm, so if it's a coastal storm, you know, areas of St. Mary's and Kelver are likely gonna see those inclement weather conditions before we do. So we kinda rely on the information. And then, we also pay attention to what's happening to our west across the river in the Virginia counties. And if we see that they're starting to issue delays and issue cancellations, besides looking at the radar to see that there is precipitation falling, we know that it's falling and starting to accumulate when they start making announcements also to either delay or do closures. So it's a wide range of people that we consult with. And again, as Dr. Navarro said, our ultimate goal is to make sure that it's safe for students to be on buses. And again, as Dr. Navarro had mentioned, buses have a larger stopping distance than a vehicle. And it's more difficult for buses to, you know, to safely maneuver through, you know, ice and snow conditions. But also, we wanna make sure that it's safe for, you know, a few of our student drivers who drive, but also for our staff who drive. So, you know, when making those decisions, you know, safety is our priority goal when considering what to do, whether it be a delay or a cancellation of school entirely for that day. So, yeah, so we spent a couple of early evenings back in December, and actually, when we came back after winter break, because we had a very dry period during September and October around here. And a lot of the area was under a moderate drought watch. But as we hit December and the El Nino effects kicked in, our precipitation amounts increased. So we had a number of flooding instances going back to mid-December through mid-January. So same thing, with flooding's a little bit different. You know, that's just getting to know your county and know what areas traditionally flood. So your areas along Mattewoman Creek, so your Bumpy Oak Roads, your Palm Fort Roads, Turkey Hill, and then going down over into the western side, Livingston Road. So we know which areas are gonna flood. And if you're, you know, dealing with some coastal flooding, we know that Cabo Island is always a threat to get cut off due to the high tide. So when we know whether it's gonna be a large rain event or a coastal issue, same thing, we will assign supervisors to those areas, and we'll go out and make sure that it's passable. Typically, with flooding, we're not gonna close down the entire county. So it's important for our staff to get out, identify those areas, and also working with county roads, those roads that are closed, so we can get that information out to parents, but also our contractors, so we don't have buses going down those roads. So in two incidents in December and January, we had a number of roads that were closed. And we were not able to pick up students who live on those roads. So we communicate that also to the principals, so they know to excuse those absences. And those kids are given an opportunity to make up miswork, because it is considered an excused absence if the school system can't pick them up due to weather conditions.
So just for the public's education, what are the variety of ways that parents can get the information? Because I'm old-school, right? I had to sit TV and watch and wait till my county came up and my school came up. And I know a lot of parents may not know, you know, what the various ways that they can get, whether it be text or look online. Could we just, you know, for the greater good of the public, give them the variety of ways that they can make sure that they get the information as promptly as possible?
And I'm gonna ask Shelley to come forward. I wanna remind families, in our calendar, I think it's, Shelley will tell us which page, there's information. But this is the time of year where we really need to have your most up-to-date contact information. And if you put like, two or three, what ends up happening is, after that wonderful 4:45 call, 10 minutes later, I think in my household, there's four different rings that go off, because we've given two phone numbers and two emails, and all of them start going off. So Shelley, can you talk about what we need from parents on that? We don't really wanna go by the TV stations. We wanna go by our information.
So we typically, we typically tell the community to come to our sources first, right? We post an update on our website. We use a feature that's currently up right now that has a blurb about tonight's work session. It's called a pop-up. We post a pop-up on our website. Sometimes, if you have checked our website the night before, like Thursday evening, our pop-up said, hey, there's a two-hour delay tomorrow morning. If your browser was still open on your computer and you checked it Friday, there may have been a delay for you, seeing that we had updated it to say that schools were closed. So I do remind people when you're checking our site to refresh your browser. We do send out an email to all staff members. We send out an email to all parents. If you have opted in as a parent for text message notifications, because we do require parents to opt-in for that, for staff as well. It's an opt-in process. They will get a text message. We also use the county government citizen notification service, because that is a way for community members who are not parents or staff to sign up for emails and text message notifications from the school system as well. We do report to local media. That information is subject to how they report it. I do have access to be able to go in and not only update our statuses on their platforms, but I also send an email notification. And with last week's changes, by the time I had logged in to, say, NBC4's platform to update, somebody on their team had already taken my email and updated the information on their platform. But I always get an email from a community member who says, hey, I saw WMAR saying that CCPS, there was a two-hour delay. And I think they were talking about a Virginia school, or not CCPS for Charles County Public Schools. So we even have language in our calendar that says, you know, our television and our radio stations don't always report the most accurate information. And we tell people to come to our platforms first, which also includes social media. We put posts on Facebook, X, Instagram. We get a lot of interesting messages from students on Instagram.
I'll bet.
Yeah. And same with X and Facebook as well. And with Facebook, we know that's where we're gonna catch our staff and our parent audience. So we try to put timestamps, weather update. I think we used some of that language last week, because we did have, you know, the one initial call about the two-hour delay. And then, it was, you know, changed to a school closure. So parents will only get a text message through our notification system if they've opted in, and if their cellphone number is on file with the school in synergy. Same with the email. When we have inclement weather closures or delays, our office gets, you know, a handful of phone calls from community members who will say, my email address is on file with my child's school, but I didn't get your update. And we'll look into it, research it, and we will find that that person's email server may have blocked our account, because it comes from a unique email address, message@ccbu.com. So we're able to troubleshoot things like that. So it is important for parents to have an accurate email address on file. If they change it during the school year, please change it on, you know, in synergy with your child's school. Same for the phone number, because they will run the risk of missing those types of updates.
I do have one more question. Do they do the robo-calls anymore?
So not for inclement weather, that's early in the morning. We have used them in the past when there's an odd change in the middle of a school day. But typically, we find now, more so with social media and how quickly information is shared that way, that we're not diverting yet to using the robo-calls. There is the availability to do it. I just don't know if, you know, an inclement weather phone call going out to 30-some-thousand phone calls, how the community would react to that. I think a lot of people would like it. I think you'd have some people who would find a little bit of frustration with it. But there have been times where we have used it. If there's a particular school closure due to a power loss, and it's, I'm thinking about a time when Barnhart was closed last year for some kind of an issue. We did use the phone call system to call those families to let them know about that update. We also have a recorded information line. That number, our inclement weather procedures are in page 10 of the calendar. I believe we have a box of, sign up for our text messages, follow our website. It's on page 20-something in the calendar. It's either 26 or maybe 28. But we have a recorded information line too, that anybody can call, that whenever there's a change, that's the second or third thing that I do that says, hey, this message is for Friday, January 19th. So we certainly can use the robo-call function. I'm just a little hesitant in using that tool, certainly in the morning.
A certain amount of time to get the sidewalks clear. So besides making sure that roadways are clear, making sure that our parking lots are clear and safe, we also have to make sure that our sidewalks and pathways on our school properties are safe for walkers. So we felt very confident, even though looking at the forecast that we saw and even looking at the radar, we saw that there was a dry slot that was, you know, out to our west and was moving this way. That snow was going to stop for a short period of time. We've, you know, felt confident that the temperatures were going to rise, which they did not on Friday. So we made that recommendation for, you know, to have schools close, you know, moving up from the two-hour delay. So it's not a situation where it's just a small group of people that are making decisions. And we also consult with neighboring counties. We see what St. Mary's and Kelver do. And based upon the direction of storm, so if it's a coastal storm, you know, areas of St. Mary's and Kelver are likely going to see those inclement weather conditions before we do. So we kind of rely on the information. And we also pay attention to what's happening to our west across the river in the Virginia counties. And if we see that they're starting to issue delays and issue cancellations, besides looking at the radar to see that there is precipitation falling, we know that it's falling and starting to accumulate when they start making announcements also to either delay or do closures. So it's a wide range of people that we consult with. And again, as Dr. Navarro said, our ultimate goal is to make sure that it's safe for students to be on buses. And again, as Dr. Navarro had mentioned, buses have a larger stopping distance than a vehicle. And they, it's more difficult for buses to, you know, to safely maneuver through, you know, ice and snow conditions. But also we want to make sure that it's safe for, you know, a few of our student drivers who drive, but also for our staff who drive. So, you know, when making those decisions, you know, safety is our priority goal when considering what to do, whether it be a delay or a cancellation of school entirely for that day. So, yeah, so we spent a couple of early evenings back in December and actually when we came back after winter break, because we had a very dry period during September and October around here. And a lot of the area was under a moderate drought watch. But as we hit December and the El Nino effects kicked in, our precipitation amounts increased. So we had a number of flooding instances going back to mid-December through mid-January. So same thing with flooding is a little bit different. You know, that's just getting to know your county and know what areas traditionally flood. So your areas along Mattelwoman Creek, so your Bumpy Oak Roads, your Palmfort Roads, Turkey Hill, then going down over into the western side Livingston Road. So we know which areas are going to flood. And if you're, you know, dealing with some coastal flooding, we know that Cabo Island is always a threat to get cut off due to the high tide. So when we know whether it's going to be a large rain event or a coastal issue, same thing. We will assign supervisors to those areas and we'll go out and make sure that it's passable. Typically with flooding, we're not going to close down the entire county. So it's important for our staff to get out, identify those areas and also working with county roads, those roads that are closed. So we can get that information out to parents, but also our contractors, so we don't have buses going down those roads. So in two incidents in December and January, we had a number of roads that were closed and we were not able to pick up students who live on those roads. So we communicate that also to the principals so they know to excuse those absences and those kids are given an opportunity to make up miswork because it is considered an excused absence if the school system can't pick them up due to weather conditions.
So just for the public's education, what are the variety of ways that parents can get the information? Because I'm old school, right? I had to sit TV and watch and wait till my county came up and my school came up. And I know a lot of parents may not know, you know, what the various ways that they can get, whether it be text or look online. Could we just, you know, for the greater good of the public, give them the variety of ways that they can make sure that they get the information as promptly?
And I'm going to ask Shelley to come forward. I want to remind families, we, in our calendar, I think it's, Shelley will tell us which page, there's information. But this is the time of year where we really need to have your most up-to-date contact information. And if you put like two or three, what ends up happening is after that wonderful 4:45 call, 10 minutes later, I think in my household, there's four different rings that go off because we've given two phone numbers and two emails and all of them start going off. So Shelley, can you talk about what we need from parents on that? We don't really want to go by the TV stations. We want to go by our information.
So we typically, we typically tell the community to come to our sources first, right? We post an update on our website. We use a feature that's currently up right now that has a blurb about tonight's work session. It's called a pop-up. We post a pop-up on our website. Sometimes if you have checked our website the night before, like Thursday evening, our pop-up said, hey, there's a two-hour delay tomorrow morning. If your browser was still open on your computer and you checked it Friday, there may have been a delay for you seeing that we had updated it to say that schools were closed. So I do remind people when you're checking our site to refresh your browser. We do send out an email to all staff members. We send out an email to all parents. If you have opted in as a parent for text message notifications, because we do require parents to opt-in for that, for staff as well. It's an opt-in process. They will get a text message. We also use the county government citizen notification service because that is a way for community members who are not parents or staff to sign up for emails and text message notifications from the school system as well. We do report to local media. That information is subject to how they report it. I do have access to be able to go in and not only update our statuses on their platforms, but I also send an email notification. And with last week's changes, by the time I had logged in to say NBC4's platform to update, somebody on their team had already taken my email and updated the information on their platform. But I always get an email from a community member who says, hey, I saw WMAR saying that CCPS, there was a two-hour delay. And I think they were talking about a Virginia school or not CCPS for Charles County Public Schools. So we even have language in our calendar that says, you know, our television and our radio stations don't always report the most accurate information. And we tell people to come to our platforms first, which also includes social media. We put posts on Facebook, X, Instagram. We get a lot of interesting messages from students on Instagram.
I'll bet.
Yeah, and same with X and Facebook as well. And with Facebook, we know that's where we're going to catch our staff and our parent audience. So we try to put timestamps, weather update. I think we used some of that language last week because we did have, you know, the one initial call about the two-hour delay and then it was, you know, changed to a school closure. So parents will only get a text message through our notification system if they've opted in and if their cell phone number is on file with the school in synergy. Same with the email. When we have inclement weather closures or delays, our office gets, you know, a handful of phone calls from community members who will say, my email address is on file with my child's school, but I didn't get your update. And we'll look into it, research it, and we will find that that person's email server may have blocked our account because it comes from a unique email address, message@ccbu.com. So we're able to troubleshoot things like that. So it is important for parents to have an accurate email address on file. If they change it during the school year, please change it on, you know, in synergy with your child's school. Same for the phone number, because they will run the risk of missing those types of updates.
I do have one more question. Do they do the robo-calls anymore?
So not for inclement weather, that's early in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
We have used them in the past when there's an odd change in the middle of a school day.
Mm-hmm.
But typically we find now more so with social media and how quickly information is shared that way, that we're not diverting yet to using the robo-calls. There is the availability to do it. I just don't know if, you know, an inclement weather phone call going out to 30-some-thousand phone calls, how the community would react to that. I think a lot of people would like it. I think you'd have some people who would find a little bit of frustration with it. But there have been times where we have used it. If there's a particular school closure due to a power loss and it's, I'm thinking about a time when Barnhart was closed last year for some kind of an issue. We did use the phone call system to call those families to let them know about that update. We also have a recorded information line. That number, our inclement weather procedures are in page 10 of the calendar. I believe we have a box of sign up for our text messages, follow our website. It's on page 20-something in the calendar. It's either 26 or maybe 28. But we have a recorded information line too that anybody can call, that whenever there's a change, that's the second or third thing that I do that says, hey, this message is for Friday, January 19th. So we certainly can use the robo-call function. I'm just a little hesitant in using that tool so early in the morning.
And for that many people. I wasn't suggesting we use it, but I just thought about the varying ranges of technology that people are either have available to them and/or generationally, people may be more comfortable with some things than others. And if we had some kind of, you know, something where your technology doesn't work now, you can't use your phone or, so the fact that people can call, I think is important too. So you can be proactive on your own and call as well as things being pushed to you. So, thank you.
Can you share that number, Ms. Mackey? Do you know it offhand?
I do. It's 301.
Okay.
934.
Okay.
7410. And I believe another line into that number is, but I'll confirm this, is 301-932-6656.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So if you were to call now, it would say, thank you for calling Charles County Public Schools. Please follow our website for the most updated information. But on weather change days, we do timestamp it as well so that people know they're getting an accurate message.
Fantastic. Thank you. Ms. Brenda Thomas?
By watching the weather, being home all this long time, I see we're going to have rain for the next four days, I think. So is that a potential of a flooding of the roads maybe that parents maybe should be aware of?
Yeah, there is that potential, I guess, looking through the next seven to 10 days. There's a chance between an inch, inch and a half. So if you get that all in a short period of time, you're more likely to see flooding. If it's spread out over a longer period of time, gives it more time for it to soak into the ground and for it to run off in the local creeks and streams. But that is something that's definitely a potential and something we will monitor.
Thank you. Okay, so that's like an early warning for the parents.
Right. Coming again, this time it's rain. Any other questions, board members?
Thank you for that.
All right. Yes, that was fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, everyone, well, I'll give you back three minutes. We'll be on recess until 6:00 PM for public forum. Paul, can you take us off, please? All right, we are back. All right, thank you, everyone. And just confirming with Mr. Schwartz, we don't have anyone signed up to speak in person, is that correct?
Correct.
And no one signed up to speak virtually as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we can move on to the pre-K curriculum for three-year-olds with Mr. Lowndes. Hi, Mr. Lowndes.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, good.
Good. Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Navarro. Good evening.
Good evening.
Today I'm here to talk a little bit about the budget for next year. There's a proposal to start a pre-K center up there in Waldorf, where currently our holding school is at. It'll be, it'll consist of three-year-olds. Currently, we do not have three-year-olds in our pre-K program except for students who have disabilities. We do have three-year-olds in that situation. And they're currently, go half-day and are currently in our classrooms with our four-year-olds. But going forward, based on the blueprint by 2032, we have to have all Tier One three-year-olds in our school system in our pre-K. And so we are beginning next year with a phase-in plan to begin and to complete by 2032. In doing so, we need a new curriculum that's appropriate for three-year-olds. So we started in December with identifying committee members to pick and choose a curriculum to use, starting next year with our three-year-old program. And as part of the process is to come to you today and inform you that we are forming a committee. The committee will meet throughout January. They will look at three curriculums that have been submitted to us to look at. And then I will be coming forward in February with a recommendation for the curriculum and why we chose it. So today is just the starting point to let you know that we have a committee looking at curriculum for three-year-olds.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Yeah, any questions?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Demela Smith?
One of my most favorite age groups, early education.
Mine too.
I'm very excited for this committee to come together. Just curious if they will also be looking at back, like as they're picking a curriculum, will they be looking at back mapping to the latter grades?
So they will be looking at how it matches the four-year-old curriculum and how it will continue on from a three-year-old to the four-year-old and then on to the kindergarten. So currently we have our Kim Hudler on that committee, who is our reading specialist for our elementaries. And so she'll make sure that there is a natural transition into the grade schools as well.
Awesome. And can you just remind me again, where are we with beginning to formulate the committee? I don't believe the announcement has gone out to the public just yet to begin to solicit.
Look, there actually has, the committee is being, is formed and it's made of our preschool folks, our elementary folks, our reading and math, and our special ed folks that are also part of the interventions. And it also has community members that have pre-K programs in the community. Because one thing that we're trying to do is align our pre-K programs with our community programs as well. So they'll be part of that. And currently we do offer all of our curriculums to our private pre-K programs. And we provide supports to them, so we want to make sure that they're on the committee as well.
That's great.
And teachers as well. And so there's quite a few people that are listed up there that are on the committee.
Definitely appreciate that. My third question was going to ask about our private providers and how we're pulling them in. But my fourth question also inquires about parents. Do we have any parents serving on the committee with like young children?
There was the Judy Center and the Judy Center was looking into bringing some parents that are currently active members within the Judy Center. When I talked to them, they had yet convinced someone to be part of the committee. And I'll check on that and make sure that we're still looking and trying to get people to part of the pre-K program. Because right now, the folks aren't really part of our school system, so we have to find alternative ways to bring them in. And that's, we do have some families that are currently within our Judy Centers. And so that's why we reached out to them and asked them if they can connect us with some parents.
And for our community partners that you referenced, are we also looking at like our childcare providers?
Yes, that's who we're looking for.
So one and two-year-olds, like the younger ages?
Yes, and we have, currently we're working with them anyways because we're trying to help and support them become providers for our schools that we can actually partner up with them. And so the ones that we're currently working with, we've asked them to be part of this.
I'm very excited. So when we talk about foundational education and opportunities for our children, this is exactly where it starts. So excited, I'm tripping over my words. So looking forward to see sort of where this committee goes and hearing more in later in the session.
Yes. Okay, Mr. David Hancock and then Ms. Samisha Thomas.
Thank you. And just a real quick question. At one time in our Title I schools, we actually had Threes programs. Is there a way to reach out to those teachers of the Threes program? They include their input on this committee since they have had some firsthand experience with that?
Sure. Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm equally as excited as Ms. Smith because I used to run daycare centers a long, long time ago. I got my 90 hours, like I loved the little kids until they do something, y'all keep, but anyway. I have a question about working with our private providers. There are some larger private providers and some smaller private providers. And while I understand you may not be able to include everybody on the committee as part of this committee, is there some thought about surveying those, that group so you can? Because of course it's difficult to get them to be on committees because they're, you know, with kids and providing direct care. But is there some thought about perhaps incorporating a survey so we can get more participation, but maybe not physical participation?
Sure, we can have, we can send them out some information about the three curriculums that we're looking at and get their input on that.
What are the three curriculums? Are you, are you able to talk about?
I cannot specifically about that because the committee are the ones that have organized and bringing them in to talk about.
Okay. I'll be excited to hear about that. Thank you.
Same. Okay, I think I saw Mr. Lucas, Ms. Warren, and then Ms. Kramer.
Thanks. Just to follow up, I heard what you said and I'm reading all the participants here, but I only see one, it says one parent liaison. So I'm trying to, you mentioned the Judy Center, but it said Judy Center Early Learning Hub Coordinator. Is there, but is the Judy Center going to draw and try to have more parents involved? Because I, when I read this, I see.
So right now, we haven't been able to get a hold of a particular parent and that's why I did not put one on there because I didn't want it to seem like we had one. But the Judy Center is working on getting us some parents. So we're hoping to have some parents that are the Judy Center's working with.
Okay, because I think it would be helpful to have more than just one parent on that committee. And the other question, I don't know if you can answer it. Is the threshold for having private providers provide, giving care for three-year-olds the same as it is for four-year-olds under the blueprint? Whatever the percentage is now, it's been varying. So I know our Title I.
So my understanding of it is that you have to have that threshold for the pre-K program in general?
Okay, oh, so it encompasses three and four-year-olds?
Yeah. By the time we're at 2032.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warren and then Ms. Kramer.
Anything curriculum I'm excited about? So, real quick question. Are you going to partner with any public health or pediatricians or anything like that? Are they going to be a part of this committee? Just, I'm just thinking about that whole child concept. I know we have our school nurses and things. Are they at the table as well?
They are not currently at the table, but I can talk to, that's actually a good idea. I think they, what we did was we went with how the four-year-old curriculum was chosen and we kind of went and used that same map. And we looked and worked with procurement to make sure that was what was expected of school systems and got the approval to do it that way. And so, but I can go back with that information about including some healthcare professionals as well.
Behavioral health, all that kind of stuff, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Mr. Lowndes, so also along the lines of, some of my colleagues were just providing recommendations. What about the Early Childhood Advisory Council? Charles County has a division of their early childhood providers and a lot of, they're mostly child, they're mostly private providers and they sort of have a little group, you know, that meets regularly. And so not only would I think the childcare providers be beneficial to have on the committee, but also they can connect you to parents that they currently serve that may be falling into, you know, say they have a two-year-old or something that's going to be coming of age, you know, next year. They may potentially be parents of three-year-olds that are going to enter our program. So might be worthwhile reaching out to them as well.
Good idea. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Lowndes, just a couple of quick questions. I know nationwide staffing has been an issue for just childcare centers, especially post-COVID. I don't know if this is more of a question for Ms. Majors, but, or is it too soon to say if we anticipate any issues with filling these positions?
So we are nervous about filling the positions. The one thing that we saw when we expanded the four-year-olds is that some of our kindergartens and first, first-grade teachers went down to the pre-K and, you know, we ended up hiring our own for our own program. And so it actually created a hole in our elementary schools because folks went down to the pre-K. And so it is something that we are working with HR on and working to try to find some more folks that are available to teach. And that's one of the reasons why we went with a staggered opening for the three-year-olds because we knew how difficult it was to hire additional teachers. And we limited the number starting next year because we did not want to have to open up a lot more openings and then create more problems trying to find teachers.
Well, that's kind of related to my second question. Is that the reason why we're projecting Tier One rather than potentially all?
So it is Tier One that is required by the blueprint.
Why?
So that's why, for three-year-olds.
And, oh, and funded, okay.
And funded, yes.
Is it in part potentially because of staffing? Or we're just trying to, for the time being, focus on what's mandated? Is that?
So it's, we both really, I mean, we're looking at what's mandated, what's funded and where the teachers and bringing in teachers and making sure that we're able to staff our pre-K programs as well as our elementary schools.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
And we keep adding programs and teachers in a time where it's difficult to find teachers unfortunately.
I know. It's exciting, but yeah, I understand why you'd be nervous. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lowndes.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, and finally, we've all been waiting for, the big show. The superintendent's proposed fiscal year 2025 operating budget. So Ms. Acton and Ms. Fisher-Davis, welcome, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we're not going to go through the whole presentation as we did in the first meeting that we had in January. We'll go over the changes
Okay.
that we have due to the state funding, where we have the preliminary numbers. And then we'll open it up for any questions that anybody might have. So as we've done in the past, I'll give you an overview of it. And then Ms. Fisher-Davis will walk us through a few slides to give you a little more detail than me.
Okay.
So we did not get a pleasant surprise from our state numbers. Our state funding went down approximately $1 million. So in an effort to try to keep an aggressive ask of the county, which was at 29.6 million over the current year funding, we did make some other changes to try to alleviate some of that load that would have increased it. So you can see that there's an increase of 563,000 local revenues. That's basically interest income, which is okay as long as interest rates stay up. But obviously there's a risk if interest rates go down. We did bring in 1.6 million more of fund balance, which is a little risky. For those of you that have heard me speak about this forever, fund balance should really only be used for one-time funding. So to include it in our operating budget is a risk. The 500,000 that we had allocated for teachers' pension, we did reduce that and said that we could hopefully absorb that in the rest of fixed charges in some other category. So we took that out. The biggest change that you'll see is in collective bargaining assumptions. And this, again, is a little bit risky in that we took our vacancy rate down. We normally budget at 99% and we took it down to 98% to try to allow some room in this budget for other items that are lots. You'll see on, that there's a change to the compensation study amount and also HR advertising. Those numbers were mistakenly shorted in the previous, the previous presentation.
I'm sorry, can you?
So I'm going to go back through it.
She'll go through it.
Okay. I've seen the slides go, but.
Yep, she'll come back. And then the last addition is for the community schools that were added, which is basically we get the revenue and then we have to, it goes back out in coordinator position and other funding. So what that does in total is it brings the county ask in at the 29.6 million. Our total ask that we have, you know, is, we've tried to hold the line a little bit on that. So the base expenditure budget is still at 480,771. So Sheri will walk us through the detail and then you can jump in with all your questions.
Okay. So no changes here to our strategic priorities. We did want to just touch base on this just to give some clarifying information. So this information is published by MSDE and it is the per pupil cost for our county and some surrounding counties. So this is the most current information that's available. And we touched on it briefly during the last meeting, but we wanted to just kind of hit it one more time just to show the average per pupil cost for Maryland is 17,377. We currently are 16 out of 24 with a per pupil amount of 16,317. And you'll see how St. Mary's is 19th, Somerset is number one, and Frederick is 24th. Okay. No changes to that, no changes to our special population. As Ms. Acton said, we did receive our preliminary state numbers late Friday evening. And the state revenues are down a little over a million dollars from what we had initially projected. Again, we're adding about 563,000 from interest income and an additional amount from our fund. fund balance. Again, we'll look at the state funding, which sits currently at 10.8 million, and the areas that we did see a decrease were in the guaranteed tax base, transitional supplemental instruction, and career and college readiness. So we were looking at 2.7 million down, 520 down, and 471,000 down. The county funding, as Ms. Acton was saying, we held at 29.6 million, which is a very large ask of the county. Here, we wanted to just bring light to a correction. The FY '24 amount that we were funded was, we were basically fully funded, so you'll see the variance there is zero, because we were fully funded in FY '24 from our initial ask. Okay, so we will highlight the changes. So again, we took down the teachers' pension by a half million dollars, and we're looking to offset that with the existing fixed charges budget that we currently have, so we've taken that down by a half million. Again, we looked at the compensation study and HR advertising, those numbers were incorrectly put in the last iteration, so we've made those corrections. No changes to this portion, and one of the biggest changes was to the concentration, oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, sorry. Collective bargaining, we took that down 1.7, almost 1.8 million, and that is due in part to budgeting down from 99 to 98, and some changes in some of the assumptions that we had earmarked. Some of the areas of increase, based on the preliminary numbers that we received from MSDE, we would be adding five additional concentration of poverty schools, Jennifer, Benjamin Stoddard, Hanson, Stone, and Smallwood. So you see the amounts there, so the total amount for concentration of poverty is about 3.6 million dollars, so those dollars are one-to-one to expenditures, so we can't spread that anywhere else, that has to go to the schools that are allotted. Let's see, so again, our collective bargaining, we did take down almost 1.8 million dollars, we're budgeting down 98% instead of 99. And everything else in the presentation has not had any changes, we haven't had any changes since the last cycle a couple of weeks ago. Questions?
Yes, did you want to add something, Dr. Navarro?
Yeah, I just wanted, just for the context of our wider viewing range, so we got several questions also that board members have, and we have also provided those, that document with our answers, and are happy to provide additional context as we go through some of those questions. Some of them are pretty, just clarification questions, and some of them are greater conversations strategically, so we are happy to bring anybody over and answer any questions the board has.
All right, thank you, Dr. Navarro. So do we have any questions? Ms. Kramer? Thank you for being here, and I appreciate you all. I had sent some questions ahead of time, and you did answer them, which was great, and out of that, I just had a couple of follow-up questions. Most of them were clarifying, but, and then I had a question in response to another board member's question. So my first one is question number seven, which was about slide 23, and so the question was about CTE programs and giving an example of some of the, I guess, program materials or things of that nature that were included in that budget line item. And so you gave an example of one of the particular programs that has had an increase in subscription costs. Did you want to pull that up?
So we don't have the questions?
Okay, no worries, no, I thought you were looking for it, okay. No, I have, I received it, yeah, so just my follow-up to that, well, and one, for the benefit of the public, just to make sure that the public understands that CTE programs, you know, just like anything else, the cost does not stay stagnant. So that was a great example, I felt like, that you provided in terms of the subscription costs for certain programs that we provide to the students, and how, I think there was from 2021 to 22, there was a, like, $12,000 increase in subscription, and then close to 10,000 every year since. So just wanted to make sure that the public understands that when we ask for additional programs, that not only are we adding costs for additional programs, but also there are increases in costs that we realize each year for the programs that we already have, if we want to be able to continue to to fund those programs and to have, to maintain those programs for our students.
And that is an excellent point, Ms. Kramer, because I know that that the board tries to be very responsible, and so do we, and the superintendent with the taxpayer dollars, but that is something that has changed in education and is very costly, that all of these subscriptions that we have, just like everything in everyone else's house, when you renew, it's not the same as what it was. So even though we have a line item for these these items, the increases are not built into the budget.
Right, and also just to clarify, I'm assuming no, but just wanted to to ask a clarifying question, so I assume we don't know, you know, if or how much these costs are going to increase, we don't really get any heads up until we're renewing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so it also doesn't really give us a lot of time, I guess, to research an alternative program or a subscription or something like that. Okay, perfect. And my second question was about question number eight regarding the cost savings for certain programs and subscriptions, and I believe that was one of my colleague's questions. But I just noticed that one of the programs that was listed as being unsubscribed or that we're no longer going to use is DreamBox, and I know that that was widely used in elementary, so is there something, yeah, is there something that's going to be replacing DreamBox?
Yeah.
Personally, I'm a fan of DreamBox, so.
Me too. I was going to ask, can it be incorporated in Clever somehow, or is it completely?
So what we did this year was, we looked at, and we heard from some of our schools that they wanted to try MyPath, which is linked directly to iReady, and it looks at exactly where the students are scoring and where they need their help and their support, and it it brings the student right into where their individual help and support is needed. And we've targeted and piloted it this year with a few of our schools, and we've gotten good success. The DreamBox, we've been using it for a long period of time, and when we looked at the data, you know, the students haven't been moving as quickly as we would have liked to have seen. And so when we looked at, are we going to look at MyPath and go with MyPath, or are we going to stay with DreamBox, because basically they do the same thing, it's providing the interventions for our students. We, we, based on the data and looking at, you know, the high, who was ranked higher in the interventions, we chose to go MyPath next year and to drop DreamBox.
Okay, thank you for that, you know, nothing personal, I just, you know, I'm used to DreamBox.
No, there's a lot of affinity when people have been doing it for a long period.
I mean, I just got out of elementary, right?
It's hard to drop something. So that's the thing, is, is like, everyone wants to add, but no one wants to drop.
Yeah, yeah, no, totally understand, but that was, and I appreciated you providing that, providing that detail, because, yeah, sometimes when we see things go away and understand that decisions have to be made like that, right? And obviously, if it's not serving our students the way we want, or we had hoped, or they're not achieving the success that we would like to see, then of course we need to look at, you know, using alternative programs, but I know that a lot of parents, you know, elementary parents like myself.
There will be something for them to use, I don't want to think that we've totally forgotten or dropped them off, they will have MyPath to be able to use in very similar.
Absolutely, okay, thank you for that, and that's all I had, but I just wanted to thank you all again for taking the time to answer the questions for us, because that, the detail that you provided and some of the context was really helpful for me in understanding some of the line items that I had questions about, so I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kramer. Ms. Smith, did you have a question?
Chairwoman Morley, just a few clarifying questions, just, I don't necessarily understand some of the categories that you've laid out. You spoke about local revenues decreasing, or increasing, excuse me, increasing, but that the guaranteed tax base had decreased.
So the guaranteed tax base is funding that comes from the state, which has to do with where we fit into the wealth formula for the state and all the other LEAs. The local increase that I talked about is interest income that that we earn locally here based on dollars that we have in our banks.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had was just, you mentioned that we're at 29.6 million, which we know is a pretty decent ask, I'll say.
Above this year's funding.
Yes, but noting that education is expensive.
Yes.
And it is the, I believe we are the largest employer in the county.
Sometimes they say second.
You think the county itself, yeah.
Fairly close. But we're the most important, I'll say.
I was going to say, but we are the most important hands down.
Absolutely.
That is a fact.
I think that's not debatable. So, but I am curious, how have we handled in past years? So yes, last year, the commissioners fully funded us, but how have we handled in past years where there was a decrease, or it was clear that they weren't going to fully fund us?
So at that point, we don't really have, we have to have a balanced budget, so we don't really have any choice, except to go through the initiatives that the superintendent is putting forth and make some hard decisions about which ones we'll be able to carry forward. This year, I mentioned it in the document that we sent where we answered questions a couple of times, but the funding for the blueprint was scheduled to be lower this year from the state, that's just the way it was laid out in the law, that's kind of where we are. And and what ends up being a trick for us in the county is that there's a local share that goes along with the state share for blueprint funding, and until that local share, the total of that is above MOE, then all the county has to give you is MOE.
Right.
So we're not at that point, so we're still bound by the MOE, and therefore we're asking for more than MOE, and the funding that is needed to implement the blueprint has to come from the money that they're giving us out of MOE. So prior to the blueprint, that money was ours to kind of use as we saw fit, and now we have to take a big portion of that money and apply it to the blueprint initiatives that have to happen, which leaves you less money for other things that may not, or may be more aggressive than the blueprint timeline that we're trying to do.
No, I definitely appreciate that, and before I go into my next question, I fully support what we've proposed. I think what we've proposed definitely reflects the values of our county, I think it reflects what we've heard community members ask for more of, not just rich and supportive academic programs, but also social-emotional learning programs, also programs that support after-school and youth engagement, also programs that support decreasing the number of issues that we've seen in school, like emotional and kind of harmful issues that we've seen in schools, sort of with students. So I think the budget fully reflects what we've discussed as a board, what we know our community wants, but I know that we're going to have to take some closer looks at the budget to figure out if there are some decisions we need to make in terms of decreasing what the ask might be. My final question was that, you mentioned for collective bargaining that there was a shift from funding at 99% down to 98%. I'm just curious what went into that thought process?
You know, the 80%, 80-plus percent of of our expenditures is staffing, so that's that's the biggest lever we have to pull. We do have lapse salaries every year, we we have budgeted 99% for quite a number of years, so to try to save some money and to make this number a little more reasonable, it certainly didn't move it that much, you know, we we thought that was the right thing to do at this point in time.
Yep, makes sense, yeah, just wanted to hear, thank you.
Ms. Smeesh Thomas, and then Mr. Lucas.
Thanks so much for the the questions to the budget, whoever put in all the time, and my questions about IT technology, I appreciate that, because I do know that that expense continues to go up, and it's a it's a cost, it's more of a cost avoidance when you're trying to identify ways that you can glean funds back. So seeing the subscriptions that we've changed, I just had one question, earlier there was this conversation about piloting the use of software subscriptions before full usage, how does that process work? Because I think maybe there are, the way in which I think Vice Chairperson Kramer said, wait, we are losing something, right? And so I just want to make sure when we are swapping out software, that we've done the due diligence, because to to purchase software or subscriptions and then not use them is kind of money wasted, so I just want to make sure that, you know, as we pilot these softwares and we roll them out, that we also, it comes with the user engagement, so that we make sure we get the best use out of the software, so so trying to understand that. The other thing that I think, and I know the ERP, in out years, it's going to be a cost savings for us after, you know, getting over the big, you know, the initial piece, but our teachers.
I think that also, though, depends on how much support we're going to have to contract out.
Right.
And my concern is that what we look at right now and say could be savings may be eaten up by.
Right, so so those are some of the things that I think we we probably collectively, we need to have conversations about how do we do the things that are not direct student support on a lean budget. There are, you know, a myriad of ways to do it, but sometimes you you look at, you know, best practices in the marketplace and say, best practices of how to do implementation of software, what's the best way to do it that's lean, because we do know that we're having to tighten our belts here, so I think having those conversations may be, may prove fruitful to find cost savings, and also, you know, sometimes you you purchase consulting services, or you you buy one FTE. If you balance the consulting services over the FTE, sometimes it's cheaper to get the FTE, if you can get one that's very skilled, that'll save you the consulting dollars, so to have those conversations, I think, may be helpful.
You're absolutely right, as long as we can find the people and convince them.
That's the trick, yeah.
And there's some.
For persistence.
And Ms. Majors can probably think of some very unique ways, you know, we have a very, there's a workforce in the tech world, they are, you know, global, you can hire somebody in California, and they come here once a month or something, and it's cheaper, so just to think about different, different things like that. But the other thing that I, teachers are our most important resource here, right? None of us can get the work done without the teachers. So I I'm a, I I I know that there's, you know, students have to learn, but students can't learn without teachers, so I'm very happy to see that we have a budget that is, was progressive in getting to the salary amounts early, because that progression for the students means that we can try to attract people sooner and get teachers in. But if we if we have to spend the money now on the teacher salaries, which is the right thing to do, based on the blueprint, but also based on attracting, if we prioritize some of these budget things that we have to let go or hold on to at arms-length, if we should get some money later on from the state, can we kind of put those back in if we, you know, because I know sometimes there is some funding.
And we have done that, if if final numbers, if we get more from the county than we expect to, and or more from the state, we have gone back to our unions and and put it back into salaries.
Okay, okay, I think that's that's my only question, I mean, I I like the way we've done the prioritization, I'm very happy to see that we focused on the two most important resources, which is educating our students, but also who we need to do that, which is teachers. And as I think Mr. Lowndes just talked about, we're going to increase programs, which means we need to increase, you know, academic professionals to to do direct teaching, so I I hope that we can keep those salary dollars, and I hope that the public sees that, you know, we have to put this 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 money in, and the commissioners will see that they have to help us, because we need kids to get educated, and we can't do it without teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Chairperson Morley. Couple of things, just want to make sure I'm seeing all this correctly, so on the the total number of FTEs I see is 75, so that would be 75 new people to the school system if all those things were funded, correct?
Yes, sir.
We're not.
So we're actually at 80 now?
Was it, I saw two, I I didn't know which was.
Yeah, 75 was before the additional concentration of poverty schools.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have to have a coordinator at each location, so five more.
All right, I mean, so this is not a reallocation of people we have, these are 80 physically new people to the system, okay, thank you. The other thing, so the mandatory costs, 7.7 million, and then. And then, right below that, all those items, everything that we have to do for the blueprint is 3 million. I'm reading that correctly, right?
Yes.
And as the superintendent pointed out and, and Ms. Acton pointed out, this was a, as lean a year for, for mandatory blueprint stuff as we and everybody else are going to experience. So, with my, I agree with my colleagues in that, you know, the budget, the budget should be what it should be and, and you shouldn't, you shouldn't filter it in any way. You need to show the, our, our funding source and the public what it takes, as was read earlier in the proclamation from the governor, to have a world-class educational experience. And, you know, if things don't come through, that's fine, then we'll, we'll go through and, and make some decisions. But I, I think we, we always need to keep our foot in the gas and, and, and let everybody know what's, what's necessary. The other thing, and I'll just mention, and you mentioned it before in our board meeting, you know, we used to have a higher percentage of the county budget and la, and last year, and, you know, it was, we, we got everything we asked for. Now, some of that was still kind of, I'll, I'll say the COVID, you know, we took a, a hit in, in enrollment as everyone did during COVID. So, I think some of that ask is reflective of that downturn and you can see it in the other data that you provided, but, but our anticipated enrollment next year is jumping quite a bit. So, you know, I, I, I think we need to impress upon the commissioners that, that, that percentage, which, you know, 20 years ago was closer to 50%, that, that we need to be able to make the case. And, and clearly we have in, in all the detail that the superintendent has provided of why that funding is important. But I just wanted to point that out. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Any other question? Oh, Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple, one question actually. The 1.6 million from the fund balance, typically that money is used for one-time cost or non-recurring cost. Is that gonna be the case here? Or is that gonna be used wherever?
Right, so if, if we have to pull that in and use it, it would not be for one-time funding. And my hope would be that when we budget for the next year, we were not using that same 1.6.
Yeah, cause as you had mentioned, that's a little bit unprecedented.
Yeah.
You know, we usually, when we go to use that, it's, it's for a one-time.
Absolutely.
Expenditure.
That's the way it should be spent. Those are the parameters that kind of guide accounting on, on the fund balance. It shouldn't be part of your operating budget because theoretically, eventually you would have zero if you had to keep using it every year in your operating budget.
Absolutely. And one other thing, I just wanted to clarify, something that was mentioned at our, our last board meeting about the county increasing taxes in preparation for our budget, they, the tax rate in the county has not increased. The personal property rate in, in the county is, it's 1.14%, which is slightly higher than the state's average of 1.18. But what's happened is in the county, real estate value has increased. So, the value of people's homes have gone up, so the county is receiving more revenue, but the, the tax base has remained the same. I just wanted to clear that up. So, the county is getting more revenue, but not because they've raised, raised their taxes and.
And if I could interrupt, it's also that those property taxes are phased in over three years.
Correct, that's correct.
So, the county doesn't get all of that in the first year.
That's right, yeah. So, it's a big hit at one time.
Yeah.
So, but, but yeah, it should be interesting. Our commissioners have really worked with us the last couple of years and look forward to, to working with them to, to get a budget that will benefit everyone. So, thank you.
Did you have, Ms. Warren, okay, sure.
Related to this, but it might be Mr. Lyles. Be able to answer it. I'm just curious, when we're talking about the CTE cuts and everything, is there a way or are the schools, principals, whoever will lose that funding, are they notified in advance? Like, how are they notified that this, this is gonna end? This particular program is gonna end? Just so they can transition from, you know, whatever that loss that they're gonna take or whatever? I'm looking at like the online textbook and all of that.
So, so that would be what would happen if we didn't fund it? So, currently, we have, we receive quite a bit of funding when we start a program from the state. And I gave the example of barbering within there. And the state gives us startup costs and they give you two years' worth of cost with the idea that the LEA will take over cost after that. And so, we're at a point now where we've started up some programs and now it's on the local budgets to continue funding it if we're gonna continue with those programs. And so, this was an example of, of that. The other thing that, that I think Vice President, Vice Chairperson Kramer mentioned was the increased cost. So, during COVID, quite a few of our online curriculums costs skyrocketed and they increased by quite a bit. We did not increase that in our local budget. And I, I mentioned that, you know, we, we had some cost overruns the last couple of years where we found the money other places, but now we looked at how much does it actually cost to fund our CTE programs and we put that into the budget for next year. You know, the ESAR funding's drying up and we were able to use ESAR funding to help plug some holes over the last couple of years. And so, I just think folks also need to understand, you know, with these cost overruns, it's not gonna be as easy to find the money as it, it has been with us being able to use some of that ESAR funding.
No, thank you. I, I totally understand that. I get it with the cost and the subscriptions and all of that. My colleagues make some very good points that I agree with. I'm just thinking through, trying to find solutions, like are we leveraging relationships with, you know, the college or nonprofits or, you know, just, I'm just kinda, my mind kinda went there.
So, one of the reasons why we did what we did next year for our early college program and brought some CTE programs to the College of Southern Maryland was that exact thinking that we're not gonna be able to provide all of these programs by ourselves and increasing pathways that the blueprint is requiring us to do. We have the College, the College of Southern Maryland as a great partner and they have some of these awesome programs that we're able to take advantage of. And so, hopefully next year, that'll be a great, you know, continue to be a great partnership with our CTE programs and our students will take advantage of that at the College of Southern Maryland. But we're also thinking very similar to how else can we be creative in finding ways to continue to offer different programs, but also on a, on a budget that we'll be able to maintain.
Thank you. Ms. Smeesh.
Really quick question, really kind of a go back to Ms. Warren's point. Are we able to, to gain any economies of scale by negotiating subscriptions or contracts that we have that is duplicated across the county? So, let's say in the tri-county, Charles St. Mary's and Calvert all use the same something and they would give a volume discount if we all are subscribing. Do you guys have conversations across the counties with others to get those volume discounts when possible?
Yes, so we do some of that where we are part of a pool. We piggyback off of other LEAs if they've gotten a, a good rate. Our contracting, our purchasing department does negotiate those contracts for us. So, I mean, we're continually looking for the best price.
Okay, yeah, I see that as a price mo, a cost model, that there are times when there's a shared pool of resources that you can kind of negotiate at lower per, per instance or per subscription rate if there's volume discounts. So, hoping that we can leverage more volume discounts in the future and not just, you know, local, you know, close proximity to us, but across the state too. I think that would, that would realize some cost savings, particularly with the subscriptions that have, right, they've skyrocketed over the years. Thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, Ms. Kramer?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I just had a couple of questions and just some points to make for the benefit of the public from the original PowerPoint. That is posted on the website, is that correct? Dr. Navarro, that's already on the, okay, perfect. For the public to see. So, and as far as our questions as well, were those also posted? Perfect, okay. But just wanted to point out on slide 20, so some of the things as we're talking through what it costs to really offer, as Mr. Lucas said, a world-class education system for, for students. On slide 20, we talk about the middle and secondary extracurricular plan, which is one of the questions that I had. So, I just wanted to make sure for the benefit of the public, they understand, so when we're phasing in, which is great, you know, I love the answer you provided, phasing in two sports per season, three seasons per year, you have to have coaches, you have to have sponsors, you know, spend their time to do this. And then we're also gonna provide transportation. So, that's also an increased cost. So, as much as we all want these programs, we have to understand that everything comes with a cost, right? And then that our funding is not infinite. So, you know, we really need the support of our commissioners, you know, our, our local counterparts to really make some of these things happen. So, just wanted to, to point that out for the public that that, that is included in our budget, but obviously, we need to make sure that we have funding and resources available in order to be able to do all these wonderful things that we wanna add on to each year for our students. Something else that I noted was the expansion of AP African-American Studies course to all high schools in fiscal year 2025, which I know we piloted last year and that was an ask. The public wanted to see, well, can we see that every high school? Like, it's a pilot, that's what a pilot is, right? We try it out, see how it goes and now it's gonna be expanded. So, I, I was happy to hear this and I know the community, you know, had asked for this and will be happy to hear this too. And then also on slide 28 of the budget, the original budget presentation, there was some increases to the behavioral health positions, like the psychologist position being converted over to, was it 11 or 12 months? 12 months, okay, so that they can provide support through the summer and things like that. And I think this is crucial to address, obviously, the growing needs for behavioral health services throughout our systems and kudos to you, Dr. Navarro, for thinking, you know, having that forward thinking to say, hey, we need to, supports can't stop at the end of the school year, right? Because we have, we do have summer programs, of course, but then we also have students and families have needs. And if we've been providing those services throughout the year, you know, there's a gap there when they go home for the summer. So, definitely appreciate that. And then, of course, the, many of the added instructional supports there that are listed on that slide, such as the increased ESOL teachers, increase in high school counselors, special education positions, et cetera, all of those are very important to meeting the growing needs of our school system. So, just wanna point some of those things out. I know everybody doesn't wanna, you know, read our, however, long page budget, but, you know, these are just some things that I think are really important. If you do a deep dive into it, you see why, you know, we need to ask for these funds if we're gonna be able to provide, you know, the support and the instructional materials and all these great programs and all of these things for our students that they come as a cost. So, just wanna really point some of those things out. And then lastly, just noting the addition of several more community schools. So, I think now I added up, we have a total of 10 concentration of poverty schools, is that correct? So, we've added Stone, so we now have a high school, several middle schools, Hanson, Smallwood, Stoddard, and then, of course, Jennifer Elementary. So, just again, wanted the community to be aware of that. That means added resources, right, for those communities and that's a good thing. But my question about that was, how much of the, the concentration of poverty schools are funded by grant funding and how much do we need to sort of put up for, from local funding in order to, you know, get the community school coordinators or the health coordinator and those added positions that come along with that designation?
So, it's zero grant dollars. It's all part of the operating budget.
Okay.
The initial, very first year, we had the concentration of poverty schools, they were funded through a grant, but then MSD switched and it is all part of the operating budget, just like any other funding revenue line that we receive from the state.
Okay.
But it's specific in that we need to spend it in that way.
It's restricted.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not restricted as a grant like Title I, but it is restricted in that we have to report on it to them, like on a monthly basis.
So, the state does provide some specific funding?
3.6 million is specific, so that's why I said it's dollar for dollar. So, 3.6 comes in, 3.6 need to go out for those.
For those particular schools, okay. And so, in the past, has that, the state funding that's been allocated for those schools been sufficient or have we had to, or do you even know, have we?
It has been sufficient in the past.
Okay, okay, great.
Additional resources that we, that comes into play.
Yes, yes.
That was my question, cause then I was thinking, well, then that's really kind of an unfunded mandate, isn't it? Like, you have to have these, these positions, what if they're not providing the funding? But you're saying it is sufficient. Okay, great, thank you for that clarifying question. And that's all I had, Madam Chairperson. Thank you.
No.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I had a, most of, by the time you get to the last person, all the good questions have been taken, right? It's okay. But a lot of the key things that I was concerned about, Mr. Lucas touched on, the reduction in the, the funding from the county. I mean, just since 2020, it's down about 4%. It's definitely heading in the wrong direction. So, if I could just put that plug out there, because, you know, also the point that he made is that our enrollment is going up and so, something obviously we'll have to give. And also, as Mr. Hancock talked about, the fund balance, that's not designed to be used as part of our operations. So, that's equally concerning. If I could please put a plug in and inquire on behalf of the theater arts, you know, in my other life, I was a thespian. So, the theater pathway, the set design, technology, textbooks, et cetera, candidly, that's not looking like a lot of money. Is that designed to be divided among all of the high schools? Cause I've gotten a lot of, okay, could you give us a little insight? I've gotten a lot of comments that there's some schools that are not, on the surface, appearing to get equal funding.
Mr. Lyles?
He should just stay up.
I know, right?
The new program that we're going, going on at McDonough. And that's where the additional costs are coming in for the budget. And so.
Okay.
You know, I, we did give last year some additional dollars for the per pupil dollars to every school to help fund more of the curriculum spending that the local schools are picking up. I've had some conversations with some of you about how that's being allocated in some schools and how it's a variable. And there's been some discussion as to, maybe there needs to be an adjustment as how we're allocating some of that money to school and specifically earmark some of that towards the arts, so every, every school spends a specific amount or is allowed to spend a specific amount towards the, towards the arts within their building. So, I will have that conversation with the two ladies next to me and talk about how we can do that and what would be the appropriate amount of money that we want all schools to be allocating towards the arts within their building.
Yeah, because, I mean, just for disclosure, currently, it goes to the principals and if I understand it, they determine entirely, is that correct?
Well, that's so, so they, they, I'm sure they work with their people within their building as how they're gonna allocate the money towards the, the curriculum that's being spent within their buildings. They all have individual and specific needs. But I think that, you know, the folks need, also need to understand that mu, many, a lot of the money is also spent from Central on fixing the instruments. And so, we have allocated money from Central Office to make sure that all of our students that need an instrument, want an instrument, are able to get an instrument. And then if they're broken within buildings, we're able to fix them. And so, it's really a combination of money that's within the schools for the curriculum, but it's also money from Central Office that works on specific needs that we know that all buildings have.
Okay, and if I could just make a plug, because, and I've said it before, there are certain schools that I've heard from that feel like they are not as technological, technologically advanced candidly or have the same resources. And, you know, when you go to see the plays, you can see some of the differences. I know some of the buildings may be a little bit older and there are other considerations, but I've heard quite a bit from the theater arts folks that feel like it's, it's not necessarily equitable. So, I, I would love for that to be considered and maybe when that conversation is had. And I'm sure the athletic people, I'm sure everybody, all the special interests such as it were, but.
So, one thing that we have discussed, Mr. Bodomore and myself, is what is the baseline that every school needs to function as a high-quality program within their building? Something very similar that sports does, right? Sports makes sure that every team has uniforms.
Right.
And every team has coaches and every team, so we're looking at that now from the arts perspective, what is a, the fundamentals that every school needs to have and should have in order to function as a high-quality program.
And I'm, I'm happy to hear that, thank you, cause that's been a concern of mine. And if you, and this may not be, you might be off the hook, Ms. Lyles, but if you could please, I see the 504 accommodations and services. I know we've also.
So, I'm not off the hook.
Oh, you're not, okay, you're, you're still you, okay. Still you, okay.
So, what has happened is over the last couple of years, we have students that have more intensive needs. And 504 did not have a special budget. And so, when we're looking at a student who has a 504 but needs a one-to-one, we've had to look at places to find that funding. we've had to look at places to find that funding. And what we're seeing is more and more students are coming in with 504s with more needs that are costing us money to make sure that we're meeting the needs and they're able to access the curriculum. And so we looked at the amount of money that we're spending on our students with 504s, and that's how we came up with that budget.
Okay.
Some of them need special technology and, and things like that.
And that's designed to be across all schools?
No, it's individual students. So individual students have 504s and you look at the-
No, I'm sorry, the 140,000.
So it's based on the number, this type of students that have 504s now. Some schools have more than others, and so it really is looking from across the system, how are we going to serve all of our students that have 504s?
Okay. Because system-wide, it doesn't seem like much. But Dr. Navarro?
One thing I just want to elevate in this conversation, and we're talking about 504s, but Mr. Lyles also mentioned increased costs for students with disabilities. One of the big things that both MAB and PIZAM are advocating back up to our legislation is the underfunding for special education also across the state. By the time we look at the transportation cost alone for the kinds of routes that we're doing to send kids to specialized schools outside of the county and throughout, the funding for special education has continuously taken more of a local burden or share cost. And frankly, this is, this is not just a Maryland problem. This is a federal problem in terms of the special education cost sharing. But overall, I think you're hearing also just the multiple examples of what it costs to educate students. And there is a whole thing around, you know, we, we will eventually, the, the State Board of Education meets-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow to discuss college and career readiness. We get a certain allocation from the blueprint for college and career readiness. Sherri, I just, I, I tried to call you, but you didn't pick up my call. So now I'm going to ask you and put you in, in, on the spot, because I was thinking about this in my office earlier. So I think last year, we spent, how mu- how much were we given last year or we scheduled to get this year for college and career readiness?
It's down a couple hundred thousand. Let me see, did I pick up listed it in here?
So we, we expected to get 744, and we're getting 263. So it's down like a half a million.
Yes. So I do want to explain that, so based in the, the past couple of years, because of COVID, the state gave every LEA fully funded for every student for college and career readiness. Starting next year, they're looking at how many of your students are meeting the college and career readiness standards, and they're giving you the money based on that. And so that's why there's a big drop. And that's why when I came earlier and talked a little bit about our grading policies, it's become more heightened because they're looking at GPA as one way of meeting the college and career readiness. And as you can see, we're talking a lot of money when you're talking about students, you getting a certain amount of money per student if they meet the college and career readiness.
But one other important thing for you to know also is that as the state sets, whatever standard MSD is going to set for what a college and career-ready student is, whether it's a combination of GPAs and so forth and so on, we right now are providing access and opportunities for a greater number than what that minimum requirement is. So I just want to highlight that. Our commitment to our community has been to expand AP offerings, to start and expand early college programs, to incorporate CTE in this idea of how are we more, how are we not just thinking about being more effective, but also efficient in the resource, in, in, in our resources? So we don't recreate health system programs for preparation of students if CSM already has them, but we create programs that take our students to maximize those facilities, right? And so one of the important things that we're going to have to think about, and I think about all the time, is what's the right number of kids to give opportunities to? And the right answer to that is all. And so we will always be looking at, how do we deal with program access and opportunities? And what does it really cost us to be able to do that? At what expense? And not every single dollar that we're getting at the state level means that is, is educating all of the students that we give access and opportunity for. So it is a, it is a difficult challenge because we don't want to roll back those things that are meaningful at the secondary level, that means that high school students are graduating with industry certificates, workforce industry certificates, that we're paying for some of them that really give them a livable wage, or that they're earning college credits that means that their families don't have those higher ed burden incomes. And so while this year, the amount, and yes, it was supported, it's coming less than $300,000, right now, we are scheduled to spend about $550,000 alone in early college dual enrollment opportunities. And to me, that's an excellent investment because that gives those kids a heads up. Some of those kids are first-time college-going families, and so we know that they're more likely to remain and continue because they've already had those experiences. So those are the analytics and the contextual knowledge of things that we think about. When we look at the budget, what is it that we move forward and do? And I think Ms. Thomas or one of the board members said, you know, this, this is our value system. This is not a budget. This is our values. Ms. Smith might have said that. This is our value system right on the table. And I think that's very, very important for our community to know that we have a very strong stance on what those opportunities look like for our students.
That was great. Yeah, I absolutely agree about the value system because, I mean, you could just take a look at this and see exactly what's important to us as, as a system. And Ms. Kramer also touched on DreamBox, which I think my sons, you know, they're still elementary. They'll be very devastated. But I believe Dr. Navarro mentioned that My Path is more in tune, I guess, with iReady. Is that correct? So that might be another reason. So that makes a lot of sense if, you know, if it will help us with the testing. Yeah, exactly. Sorry. It's, exactly. That's the word. Thank you. Look, it's, it's been like-
If they like it, they'll like iReady. If they don't, like my kids don't like DreamBox. They don't like the new one.
Okay. Yeah.
They'll be fine. But it'll, there will be a learning option no matter what. That's the non-negotiable.
Right. And that's what I was concerned about, and you hit the nail on the head. If we're doing away with it, will it be replaced with something? And also, I'm sure at some point, you know, as we talked about many times, there'll be the conversations with the parents and maybe like a virtual night or something where the parents can get adjusted to this new system. Because, you know, I, I love that we've been able to offer so many resources, especially to help kids get caught up from COVID. So it would be devastating to then have to take so many of these things away. So I'm, I'm hoping we don't even have to, the county, if you're listening, this is why we need all of this money. I think that is it. As I said, a lot of the questions have already been asked. Yeah, I think that's all I had. Does anyone else last call? Thank you both so much. Much appreciated. Thank you. Well, colleagues, if there is nothing else, Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lucas. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Please take us off the air. Thank you.